Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call this adjutant's session to order. Just a little bit of business. You do see Cameron in the back room. And as everyone knows, we've changed the venue to the library. We'll consider about moving it once again back to the administration. But right now, we have it here in our library. And also, we'll be videotaping it so that we can have it posted on our website. So that everyone has full disclosure on meetings. That's been something that's been asked since we've changed the meeting process, where we're going to have one televised meeting. We vowed to make sure that we disclose by having it videotaped and posted. So we do have a member from our audiovisual staff here tonight videotaping it so we can get it posted on our website. Welcome to this meeting of the Old Bridge Township Board of Education. Pursued through its five laws and half school laws of the state of New Jersey, the Board approves meetings consistent with the provisions of Robert rules of order. Board meetings are open to public consistent with the provisions of the New Jersey Old Public Meetings Act. Board may require -- Board may retire into executive session consistent with provisions of NJSA 10-4-12B. Members of the Board of Education are subject to all provisions of the School Ethics Act, NJSA 18A 12-21. Members of the public attending Board meetings are subject to provisions of the Board by law 0167 and Board Policies 9150 and 9160. And by review or barred from meetings consistent with law for conduct which is threatening, inappropriate, or disruptive to operation of the Board meeting. The Board reserves all rights and fortitude regarding the operation of its meetings consistent with its laws and policies and the provisions of the New Jersey law. Mr. Marrow, please. Statement of notice by Board President. Pursued through the New Jersey Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, notice from this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the home news review, the Board Office in schools, and the cablevision channel 18 and Verizon bios channel 24. And by following such notice, township clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, November 16, 2013. The Board will take full action on the payment of bills on Tuesday, November 16, 2013.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law and the state's statutes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices. Provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording may be considered a private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you. Hopeful, Mr. Marrow.
Adriani?
Present.
Worsely?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Colabello?
Yes.
DeGremme?
Here.
Denofrio?
Silikowski?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Mr. Marrow, let's stand for pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the beating of justice for all.
We are going to go to the agenda. Obviously, we will have moment of silence and memorism of retired fiscal education teacher, Michael Sissa. And that would be moment of silence conducted at the beginning of the business meeting. If I could just interject it this time. My name is slipping me. If anybody else knows about it, I know while we were on the week of the teachers' break for Madison City, I'd read the home news that a gentleman had passed away. He was a one-time custodian in one of our buildings. It's been about 20 years as a custodian, but retired from working in the private sector and came to one of our buildings as a custodian. I can go back and check if you hear anything or look into it. I'd like to have that as well since we're sending it to the last part. Go through the appropriate amendments at that time. Is going to be recognition, correct, Mr. Setodino? Is this going to be? Have someone we have? Will there be a superintendent? There'll be a superintendent to report on the mandated twice a year we have to report on violence, vandalism, and bullying. And progress towards goals will be a report on our expansion of the arts and languages and a report on German exchange program. Anyone have any questions on the forthcoming superintendent for the next business meeting? Do there be any characteristics that we know of at this point?
I do have a letter that Mr. Setodino asked me to read. It's from Mr. Jack Phillips, former principal at Madison Park School. It's addressed to Mr. Setodino. Dear Mr. Setodino, I would like to thank you and the Old Bridge Township Board of Education for the opportunity to fill in as principal at Madison Park School during the start of 2013, 2014 school year. Madison Park is one of the school students and parents that are friendly and supportive. Staff is cooperative, energetic, enthusiastic, and extremely dedicated. I cannot say enough nice things about their professional team approach, providing each and every child a solid start to school year. Best wishes for successful 2013, 2014 school year. Sincerely, Mr. Jack Phillips.
Thank you. We're going to read that also at the business meeting. So will there be any special community requests? Are we going to curriculum analysis?
Not now.
Just curriculum?
But I think in speaking with Mr. Setodino, this is the time to open something else up. Meeting is very long. And there were part of that meeting is for the supervisors and the school personnel to turn forward some of what they're looking for to be included in the budget. The range was from things that were $1,000 to things that were very large sums of money. Absolutely no textbooks, but software support, iPads, teachers in a variety of departments, and some supervisors, specialists, and academic coaching. Prior to Dr. Brennan, who was the superintendent, the board members were more or less giving them, this is what we ask for, this is what we are including. The new process is that school administration team wants the representatives of the community to have a say and the stakeholders in what gets included into the budget. There is no way that two or three people that are on the board in this department can make that type of decisions because the amount of money is astronomical. We need to have a committee of the whole where we can talk about it at length because a five-minute conversation between the board members who were there, it was Mr. Silikowski, Mr. Worsely, and Nancy Monkley was there, who is a board member elect. And we need to sit down with the administrative team as well during that committee. Because as the professionals, the school administration should have a huge say in what might go forward. As the representatives of the community, we also have a say. And I know that we do that in climate, but there were an awful lot of requests last night. So I really think that we should consider having a committee of the whole to discuss all of that. With that said, there are two items that came up that we need to have just a short discussion about tonight, even though we're not doing any voting, with perhaps a straw poll. And one of the concerns, Mrs. Keeler is here, with a program that the music department, the instrumental music department, the elementary school is asking for. They're not asking for any money. They just want board approval for them for to provide that service. And the instrumental music teachers on their own are willing to do this. It's very difficult with the large numbers of children in that program to have one-on-one instruction. And there is a software program out there that you can use with your computer where the child can play their instrument with orchestra accompaniment and then have it get recorded. The student would know immediately what notes they played were correct or incorrect. The teacher would be able to see that as well. And the hope is, and the literature and performance piece of that seems to be that the proficiency of playing the instrument really increases with that program. It would be of no course to the Board, but for them, for the music department to put out a flyer saying we suggest to do this, and I believe the cost was $35 for a one-time fee and then you could keep it for six years. So...
No.
No. It's a $35 annual fee for the subscription. Oh, annual fee. So the microphone is a one-time, okay. My concern was this was a public school and that what if some children couldn't record it? The music teacher said that they had the program and for those students, they could have class time for us to do that. But on the flip side, that the parents have already committed money to either buying and or renting an instrument. So therefore, the music department, Mrs. Keeler, if I explain that correctly... You did, actually, very well. Thank you. Is looking for, you know, a thumbs up, a heads up. Not that we have to have something, but they want to have approval in which to then bring that information out to the parents.
Can I just add something?
Yeah, I was just going to say... I'm looking to Mrs. Keeler if I missed anything. I was just going to add, thank you, Ms. Tebler, the fact that this is just a pilot program that one of our teachers wants to put forth. In all honesty, some of the parents already own this because we've mentioned it at a variety of different... I mentioned it at a board meeting on January 22nd earlier this year. Parents went out on their own, bought it. It is basically a replacement, but yet a much better replacement of the current method book. The method book that, you know, is provided to the student when they rent an instrument costs about $7 and it comes with about five pieces of music, beginning with Hot Cross Buds. What the students are getting with this particular piece of software is an entire library of archived music, including songs and selections, et cetera. So all we're really doing is providing a more updated, current, and authentic learning experience with a lot more music than what they have on a piece of paper. What I want is that there's an orchestra accompaniment. Correct. There's a full guided assessment. Everything is included in it.
So very $35 per student?
But they don't want us to pick.
Hold on. We're not hearing the parents. Now, the question came up, if the students can't afford this or the family can't afford this, and, you know, this is the public sector of this. What do we do as a Board of Education?
Now, the piece of that was that the teacher has it at the classroom. Students can come into the classroom and use it during class time and play along where it gets recorded, where then the teacher can then evaluate the student's performance because it's been recorded on this program. But what that student won't have is the ability to do it at home, okay? So the question was raised, now, again, this is just for a pilot program, Miss Keeler?
Correct.
For what, two schools?
Four schools.
Four schools, okay. Can we do it as a pilot program right now? What we want to also investigate is do we need some sort of policy regarding this? Wasn't there something regarding policy?
Well, the other thing too is remember, it's not only that it's a pilot or that it's an elementary school, but the point is that it's not graded. So it's not like the children, it's really for their own personal and their, you know, performance objectives for themselves. There's no grade attached to it. It's not an English class, you're not getting a marking period A, B, C, or D. So if the child does not have it, it's not academically prohibiting them from doing anything. And they will have access to it because the teacher actually teaches it, teaches with it in class. So if there's a certain amount of time or, you know, a period where they can be provided with an iPad, which he has, the student can then get access to it during one period a day or, excuse me, one period a week or something to that effect.
So is the goal for, is the goal of the Board of Education to approve the pilot program at this point?
Yeah.
It's also a lot of programming issue when we're used to working in a school that's large, but it's not a mandated program, not a child...
Right. So it's a plus to the student at no cost to the community? Why is it a plus to the student at no cost to the community?
Cost to the parents, to the family.
Personal.
But the committee, we all work for it. We have salary.
The concern is, it's a plus to the student of those parents who can afford it, right? But not for those students that cannot afford it. The point that they made to that is that this is not mandated class.
But they'll still have access.
And they'll still have access to inside.
The worst case is Little Mary says, "The little Johnny, did you do this at home last night?" No.
Because I have it. So that's the only negative. Right.
Mrs. Kimble, why can't we do it in all the schools instead of, why would we just four? Why can't we put it in all the elementarys?
I think that's the other option that was presented last night to all schools next year, which is find out.
Right, off the form. But we can, how do we pick those four?
Because Mr. Bell is currently the person who is most familiar with this program. He has been using it already. He works with our indoor percussion, our award-winning indoor percussion. He also works with the marching band. They, by the way, have been using this in the high school. It's one subscription. They're all using Ms. Bolger's subscription in a small room, separate and apart from her own classroom. And as you can see clearly, it helps with their proficiency levels. So if it works at the high school and we're already beginning to use it at the middle schools, I think it will only, it behooves us to use it at the elementarys.
Let me ask this question. Is there a student, if we decide that this pilot program is going to be forwarded and we're going to implement it in all the elementarys? And obviously, we give the onus on the parent to purchase this with the individual child. Now theoretically, can people who can't afford it say, "Well, my child is not getting the same educational enrichment based upon faculty..."
Because they'll have access to it at school.
Well, not at home, but just at school. So is there a disparity?
But how would that differ from the actual instrument itself? We don't provide instruments.
They have to rent it.
They're renting it. They're renting it themselves. This is an extension of that instrument. So, and if the child wants to play an instrument in school, we can provide it for them. We can, we have actually a loaner programs that we have. Some of it donated by parents whose children have given up on that. So we do go back to that extent, but like I said, the music program is not mandatory.
Right. It's an elective.
And couldn't they print out the music if the child really wants a song? Actually, everything is printable as long as you have bought a subscription and have access to it. Everything is printable. There are copyright laws that are being followed, you know, so we're not doing anything. Right. Child wants to teach everybody, wants to practice it, they print them out, they do it.
I think it's no brain. I think it's a great opportunity for kids to have that tool at home and in the classroom to be able to see where the errors are and listen to it firsthand.
You know, Rich, I don't think anybody, you know, everybody agreed with what you're saying. It's a no-brainer, it seems right. But, you know, just to be clear, make sure that we have all adopted the rule before the music department went out and said, "Why don't you do this?" They wanted to check for board approval. And again, I know we're not voting tonight, but there's enough of us to give, we should clap and a heads up, okay, we're okay with it or we're not.
Right. Do we have a straw poll tonight and then put it on?
We have to find out if we need a policy on it, just in case something does come up.
Anna Higa, can you just tell me which schools? Yes. Carpenter, McDivitt. Cheesequay. Cheesequay, and I forget the fourth school where he teaches. Miller? Yes. Thank you. Miller, thank you.
So I just spoke with Mr. Roberts here. Do we have, you know, do we straw poll now? And next agenda for the business meeting, it's going to delineate that area being subject for us, setting up a guideline policy for this program.
And again, then, part of what the music department is for was documented, you know, on a larger scale. This is just from now, please.
Mr. Marrow, do we have a straw poll on construction will be, resolution will be, support endeavor of implementing our program, reevaluate software for our outcome on management.
Adriani?
Yes.
Worsely?
Yes.
Callahan?
Yes.
Colabello?
Yes.
DeGremme?
Yes.
Denofrio?
Yes.
Dunn?
Absolutely.
Straw poll.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Now, the other, again, there were a lot of things that were discussed, but the other thing that is, it needs attention on a timely matter. And again, we did not have a meeting last month because of weather conditions. Tui is always asking for, thanks. Dr. Tui, congratulations. And it is a timely, it's a matter of timing at this point. And this is not about anything else that the sports services is asking for. It's one item in particular. And this is now the time in the special services where they are conducting IEPs for next year. Once a child's IEP is completed and everybody signs off on it, then we are supposed to follow the guidelines, the information that is put forward for the IEP. One of the issues is that there's a changeover in wording, therefore, the title of the course has to change, and that changes a few other things. And Dr. Tui's concern, his concern is that as his staff goes through the IEP process, he wants to be able to guide them so that we don't come up against a brick wall for September with staffing. And with that said, I can't explain it with any more clarity. So, Dr. Tui, before, Rich, go.
Just to ask you down to the memo on some of the changes. Basically, the changes as they're constituted would be on the secondary level. We do end up having, if you just take the bottom down, we do have what's called an LLD program on the elementary level, it's more self-redeeming for students who struggle with some social issues as well as some academic issues. What we'd like to do is expand that program up through the middle school and the high schools. And the way to do that specifically is...
You have 11 minutes. As we had last night.
The way to do that specifically is to reevaluate our RPA program. Right now, our RPA program, our resource placement A program is a lower level of resource placement that we currently have in place for our students, especially these students in the middle school and the high school. What we'll do is we're going to reorganize that to an LLD setting. I have provided the memo, a brief summary of what a middle school schedule would look like. At the middle school, there will be no significant staff changes at all. However, there would be some changes that would occur at the high school or age two, we'd end up looking at the high school. The New Jersey Special Education Code does allow you to group students in subject areas of various grade levels. We currently do that at the elementary level with resource. What the suggestion is, is that we would end up taking our English 10, English 11, and English 12 RPA classes, combine them into one class, and change the title to English 2, 3, 4, LLD. What that does is it not only consolidates our staffing and allows us to use staffing more carefully in the high school, but it also facilitates our use of staff in other areas of need. So really, it's taking our current resources and just applying them in a way that will allow for the expansion of some programs and not changing the services already provided to the students on the high school level. We would do that in English, we would do that in math, and then we would end up looking at United States history. Just if we look at U.S. history, RPA, U.S. history 1 RPA currently runs a class total of two, and U.S. 2 RPA currently runs at a class total of five. Now, that again is based on student need. Next year, that student need might be different, so those numbers could change. But you're allowed to end up having anywhere between 12 and 16 students in one of those classes. And therefore, by consolidating these classes and we're consolidating sections, we'll actually, as a district, save approximately five high school teaching sections, which can then be reallocated to other needs of the high school. And those other needs of the high school would include, hopefully, again, pending for the education approval, and this is not part of the discussion tonight, this is just so the child study team members can write in the IEPs going into next year that there will be an LLD program or a learning language disabled program at the middle school and the high school. Obviously, after we go through the budget process and approvals, then we can begin to look at some of the ways to take those five sections that would be saved by this consolidation and distribute them to the high school. And again, the areas that would be specifically affected are highlighted in black on the second page. And then the respective suggestions are on the bottom of an LLD consumer math class for our 80-plus students, our super seniors who are there at the high school for more than four years. It would be kind of a hybrid course off the consumer, off the personal finance course that's available to freshmen, a transition planning coordinator. Currently, we have five sections of transition planning that go out in high school. That involves busing, nursing, teaching, placement. All of that would be held, hopefully, again, pending more approval. Would be at no cost to the district if we ended up consolidating these classes between LLD. And then to expand our United States history 1, history 2, ICR sections at that high school. And then I have some statutory implementation. Thank you.
Dr. Tui, I have a question. With consolidation of the high school special needs classes, are we going to increase class sizes?
Well, leading question too, yes. I think that would be a good thing. You know, the idea is you can go up to 12.
Right. Right now, we have how many in a class size, in a, say, in a specialty class in high school? Six, seven?
Well, it's difficult. The RPA classes are not the same. You know, we are, our RP classes are our resource pull-out classes. If you, I'm taking a line out of Mr. Sasso's book, A Total Pool of Programming. So you have mainstream, you have in-class resource, you have resource pull-out, and then you have resource pull-out A, which doesn't really exist anywhere else. So the reason why we're changing that to an LLD is to provide a continuum from elementary to middle to high school. So those students in that program can end up having a similar type of environment as they transition from elementary to middle and middle to high. Our resource pull-out, their classes are extremely small. And if we're looking, and again, the Board was extremely generous last year by helping the Department of Special Services with five additional teachers. But we're looking to try and consolidate classes and utilize our staff the best. This is one way to which we can make that happen. It will take, it's going to involve some curriculum, which is why we're projecting tonight specifically for those three classes, English, U.S., United States history course and the math courses, those will be written over the course of summer. You know, we're already beginning to identify potential teachers if the trajectory goes through to facilitate this. It would increase class size, but not to the point where we would be out of compliance with the code or out of compliance with anything related to the high school.
As a parent, that would be a concern. If the class sizes are going to increase, that could be a concern for some special needs parents. And that's something which we should discuss with SEPTA, where there's a meeting tomorrow night. Maybe you could bring this up tomorrow night as well as a possibility so that not kept in the dark. I like the idea of adding more teachers for different programs, but I think we just make sure that it's communicated correctly because I don't want them being on the island and not knowing that this may happen because your class sizes do increase. They're going to want to know why, what's going to be in it for them in the long run if their kids will be, you know, one of 10 instead of one of six.
And I agree. And this is, again, a very specific student population, which right now is really being overserved, I guess. I don't know if you can really say that outside of a... I don't know if you can really say that, um, outside of a, um, tabby, I saw.
What's the limit, what's the limit of students allowed in these classes?
You can go, in these type of classes, you can go twelve to sixteen. I would not permit any more than twelve. Uh, our average right now is between eight to ten, it depends on how many sections in the classes. In these particular sections, again, US history is averaging three point five a class, and that's with two sections. Uh, you know, math is very small. The one math section on there, math skills four, is currently populated by ten students who are eighteen plus, which means they've already taken the class more than once. Um, and they come back, they take math skills four, then they take math skills four again, they take math skills four again, because unfortunately, it's not an option. That's why we're introducing that consumer math class that will allow those students to go out, consolidate the math classes, and make it better for everybody, you know, including the kids who are now going to have interaction with more than one person.
Right, so, the goal of this is to serve more of the students more efficiently and with better, with better options. So, like, like we have, we have students in our school, we've, you know, our seniors for a few years because of, they can be in our special education program until level twenty-one. Once they max out that, that first senior math option, they're taking it over again, and they're repeating again, and repeating again for three years, and it's really doing no additional service to them. So, the goal is to, without adding any cost by adding another teacher, is to, um, allow, add another course, um, so that they'll have math skills that, once they get to leave our schools, they'll be able to be more self-sufficient. Thank you, Dr. Tobi.
Okay, now, I don't know whether that leaves us, because, again, we're not voting on anything, but Dr. Tobi and his department is looking for, you know, some, some type of a, you know, a lead from us of whether or not they should, and how they should guide the IEPs for the students while the meetings are, again, this is outside the budget process, this is just trying to give us, you know, some, some leadway to help them so they can get their pay more and more.
I like what Mr. Dunn said, exactly.
Right, I was going to say tomorrow night.
Let that be the first, it's been affecting the most, but let that be the first critics, for lack of a better term.
I, I mean, what, what happens a lot of times in the SEPTA meetings, you don't have a lot of high school parents. Um, I, I, I mean, as, I'm just talking pragmatically here, um, the, I will, you'd be more than welcome to present that tomorrow if there is a, you know, if there's an uproar over the consolidation of classes, I will come back, treat that to everyone, and I, I don't think that's really going to happen. This is just a continuum and an extension of the program, it's more of a heads up for you guys, because we do end up having students who need this, and they need this when they transition from grade five to grade six, which is a big jump, and then from eight to nine, and then from nine to ten. Um, the goal is that they're not staying in this program forever. They come in, they get, they, they receive their services, and they go into a resource placement class, uh, which would be the next step on the road of, of the total full programming. So, you know, that would be the ideal. Uh, this is just to provide a straight continuum of services with more efficient people using our staff.
I, I think, I think it's a wonderful, um, direction. Like, my daughter is in ninth grade, as you know, and is in special needs program, and, and I think it's going to be well worth it, but I just want to make sure that they're aware that this is what the ideas are, so that, you know, they are kept in the loop. I think they want to embrace it, be part of SEPTA, having to do it will embrace this because it gives her that ability to, to better herself and prepare herself for after high school. So, I, I, I think that would be great, just, you know, tomorrow, we'll just bring it up there. I'll be there tomorrow night, and we'll bring it up, and I'm sure you'll get no negative feedback. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it gives the resources, the knowledge, and we'll give those a better opportunity again to, to use in high school.
Is there any way you could reach those parents before the meeting tomorrow night? The high school parents, normally, might not be at the SEPTA meeting.
Well, it's a small group, so it's not every high school parent, I don't know.
Right, and, and real time can't differentiate unless you can.
You know, I said in real time, I think, if I, I think you all got my last one. Uh, seven times. Uh, all right.
I think, yeah, the Alison will be there, the leadership will be there as long as they're, because they know what's going on, they convey it back to their members that this is, uh, an idea that we're, we're exploring for them in the program.
Okay, well, thank you, Dr. Tobi, but I think you have eleven minutes. And, um, now, back, back to the other issue is that, um, as a board, do we feel as if we should have a committee poll to, to discuss, um, the wide variety of proposals that we were given last night?
I, I think that if it's going to involve, um, finances, obviously, it's going to have to be discussed based upon their recommendation in the budget. Um, a committee to hold to determine the viability, uh, of, of the programs. Honestly, it's their recommendation, and if the, if your committee is going to make the recommendations before board, then we should engage you appropriately.
Well, we can certainly wait until the budget process and see.
What is the next briefing? So, I would like to recommend at that time, I've asked, I know Mr. Meyer this morning to give me a, you know, the larger adoption, actually, is the, well, they do.
Right, and, and you know what? That wasn't even really discussed last night.
Right.
Oh, yes, no, no, and I understand, but that was not on the other thing, sorry.
So, where are, you know, as the budget is built, based upon salary benefits and, and programs, so where, where that leaves us, um, I'd like, ask Mr. Merrick to provide me with a financial snapshot prior to that, and then, um, as a committee, uh, as an administration team, we'll gather again and review what we've gone over with you, and maybe get a better picture on, you know, what are possible contains and needs first and foremost.
Well, as everyone knows, Ruppity is no, no name, and, um, there's no way that I could send out an email or a letter to succinctly and efficiently outline all the things that were asked, and it's, it's, you know, the four, the three of us and Nancy that were there last night, you know, we now have a package which you all don't have, so, you know, I, I, I want you all to have that information so that you don't feel as if you, you know, you're being left out of the loop someplace. So, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're all on the same page with this. So, once we get some, some financial outlook, and we go through whatever's kindergarten, we look at what's left over, in the meantime, is there a way to get some of these, um, okay, that'll work. No, no, uh, it's, it was said that she would get a package for everybody else. Thank you.
Continuing with the special committee reports, anyone else?
We all have a short one on policies.
Thank you. And building grounds and transportation, I will have a finalized date for early December for our next meeting. Just, uh, two items I want to look at before we move on to this area. Um, one was the obituary. Uh, Frank Pataglia worked in Southwood as a longtime custodian, eighty-one years of age, died on November the seventh, uh, was custodian at Southwood in the twenties. So, yeah, there. And, as far as, you know, I know that Mr. Solakowski has a policy on the musical instruments, uh, support there. Um, the board policy, twenty-five fifty-one states that the Board of Education will purchase and maintain a supply of musical instruments for pupils enrolled in musical instrument program. However, in general, pupils are encouraged to purchase their own musical instruments, and district-owned instruments will be made available for pupils who purchase instruments who impose a difficult financial burden. So, basically, what it, we have here is, you know, students are encouraged to purchase their own as they've been doing, and, and as I recommend in this program, uh, you buy classroom sets of this software for the students to use when they're in the classroom, uh, for those who can't afford it, and have them be able to afford it. And may the policy can expand on that.
We're going to need more than one item, two or three kids, I mean, they don't...
Right, so, the, uh, the expansion of the policy maybe include the musical instruments and software.
We're planning a policy meeting, Kevin and I, we're planning, uh, should be planning a policy, I guess, about two weeks, right?
About two weeks, we'll give an update, uh, hopefully, at next week's meeting, what the date is, um, just to, um, feedback, back, back to the next strategic planning meeting, hopefully, bring someone in from the township in the planning board to discuss with us the plans for the building that will be taking place over by, uh, the Mishtown Road, and what we feel the impact will be on our school.
It's working.
Okay, yes.
Might want to consider, too, uh, we're over transportation the other day, and, um, the connection between Jake Brown Roads, um, we're, we're informed that Shopright, what partial land behind there, they plan to put their super shop right back there, with the new houses that are going to go back there. So, I can't imagine that Shopright's going to venture all through nine into that area without a promise that there's going to be a lot of business flow going into that area, a lot of residences. Brunetti's property.
Brunetti's property.
Yes, well, Jake Brown.
White House Garage.
Yep.
Waterworks Road.
Hell, yep.
It's all, it's all...
Jake and Oakland, Jake Brown, five sixteen.
Aren't they going to want to put a sign on the highway, though? Are you on that land?
That's, that'd be, uh, something we, we need to expand about, which is, that road going through, nineteen basis, not very wide, um, may have an impact on, on our...
So, so, let me, let the property, Jake Brown and Prime Road, that entire acreage back to Waterworks Road, that's all developed space. If you go back there right now, it's all developed with infrastructure, meaning fire hydrants, curves, sewers, and that's where Brunetti's is going to be doing a large-scale building process back there, we're going to, so there are two large-scale projects coming to work.
I will have somebody come in from the township, attend that meeting, once I confirm the date with them, I'll work out with Mr. Solakowski if we have a policy the same evening. Now, we'll have that information for everybody next meeting.
Um, back to the area that we've looked into, Madison Park.
Madison Park or Shepherd, because behind, uh, behind Glenwood, they're going to be connecting those roads into that area as well. So, that's going to overflow that way, so there's a lot of stuff.
Miller also, correct.
It's Miller, Madison, and, and Shepherd would be affected.
But Shepherd.
Well, I just said that Glenwood doesn't go to Shepherd.
Oh, okay, the schools, all, okay, I got you. Okay. Uh, we're, we're open to hearing the rest? With the, the facility issues?
Facility issues.
It was brought to my attention that I was asked to find out, um, are there any service contracts, are there any concessions standing as far as general cleaning, like, people that use it were taught how to clean the rail and the fire, but there's like a system of filters above it.
That should be...
I don't really know what it's called.
That should be, maybe this division, that she can change filters on the, on the hood system, the hood system, and also you have HVAC systems, so there should be...
There's a little cup up there. Nobody's doing anything that collects, we got nobody to do about it.
Usually, the ancillary systems are, the grates behind it from restaurants, you know, lots of lines to take them down every night, and it's steamy, so, they probably would, as the winterizing process...
Is that something our, our in-house custodians do, or outside?
I think, I think the hoods, hoods have to be done by...
That's what I remember here. Can somebody...
I'll check, I'll check.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brema. I'm going to open up to hearing the residents on agenda, I am totally... Going once, going twice.
Okay.
Going in policy. Anything catch anyone's eye on policy? I was going to do that at the end, but I'll do that now. Uh, we have three board members, uh, elect in the audience. Uh, we have Matt Amen in the back. We also have Nancy Morgan. And Logan Singh. They've all been elected, uh, to the Board of Education, uh, come January. Second, thirty, is that we open it? On the seventh. They'll be sworn in and, 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 and made a full-fledged board. Uh, we do appreciate you coming and participating, because now this is the time that you'll basically transition, uh, into, um, the position. Uh, anyone on the board is, is, is available, um, for you to communicate with. Um, I would ask, if anyone has a problem, is that the administration give them our telephone numbers, uh, for remaining six who are, who will be on the board, so you can communicate and ask questions to them. We have no problem with answering that and helping to, and guide you accordingly. And, uh, I'm watching this because I might reach out, it's good to have you on the board. So, I'd like to buy, it's a pretty cool, uh, out of the board, so, if you want to, I'm going to try and call it. Awesome. So, welcome aboard, you've got two, two months to transition, and, uh, you're going to be, uh, absolutely amazed on what you're going to know and, and learn on the Board of Education, and your, your abilities will be much appreciated. Thank you again. Policy. I see that Board of Officers in Monjueros, would that be the first reading? And the second reading will occur in December. Now, the Board of Officers, obviously, in, in January, will be electing a new president and vice president, with a new policy being placed for that election. It will, after the second reading, it becomes policy. So, it will be voted on at December meeting. Dan, can you have, um, just, I'm not sure where I have it now. I just want to see a copy again of the two-day services policy. I don't need it right now. Between now and... Anything on policy, including athletics?
Don't I have a, um, on athletics?
Absolutely.
I was approached by a community member who's, um, heavily involved in baseball. Do you remember a meeting a little ago when, uh, the general was presented a baseball coach, and we both, no. I myself personally, I don't know either coach personally, my vote was pretty much based on the sentiment of the community that showed up. Um, this person was just concerned about, uh, the new person that's going to be presented. Apparently, this person is a parent of one of the players, and, just like every other club or group or whatever has their own little clique, I guess, apparently, the baseball community has some rumblings about concern for this person. Not to knock this person, if that's a good person, I don't know either one, but it was just brought to my attention that, um, let's see, the father of a player, is it, is it, I don't know if the word ethical for head coach to have a son. In Little League, I guess, it's one thing, at a high school level, I, my son was five years old, I was his coach, and they stood there and watched the ball, didn't know what they were doing anyway. Um, one question that bothered me is that a breach of policy, but he's an outside person, I do not know the answer to that. I, I don't think it is, because I want him to be the first coach, I guess. Um, are we leaving ourselves open for any issues with hiring this person? And apparently, uh, I think the principal was contacted, the high school principal was contacted, and this person was led to, just concerns of a community member, I'm not sure.
I think Dan Roberts would be the best person, or David, to answer those questions. I can cover briefly now, and before he has questions, we can cover. Exactly. Um, under the PERC law, there is a qualified internal candidate for the position. Uh, that's the first person who is the first back in the job. Now, at the last meeting, uh, the board, sorry, I tell them, um, at the last meeting, the board rejected that candidate. The board went back out, the administration made a separate recommendation, it's an outside candidate. Uh, again, as with the first determination, the board has to evaluate the candidate, they believe they are the best person for the job, they give you the point. Um, you may get, uh, an action from the first person who was an internal candidate. I can't really go into much more, uh, into that now, um, we come to that in the session transfer viability.
So, I have some questions, and I don't know if all of the answers to this question will be given tonight, right here, before we go to a session for that. Where did this candidate come from? I know, I, I wasn't present at that meeting, but I was, uh, I, I, I watched it, I recorded that evening, and watched it when I got to the work day that evening, and I, and I recall that name being brought up by a number of the community members. I also noticed that many of the community members seem to have some sort of affiliation to one particular lead within the town, and I'm wondering if, you know, the majority of those students, or baseball players, if you will, have some sort of ties to coaching, if that's how this is coaching being brought in.
The, the, as far as I know, that's, it was the assistant coach who was in Florida, and, um, he was an outside candidate, only a bachelor's degree, uh, county substance certification, which is required, uh, ASPer Code, and he was currently an assistant. The only, because the applicant should work way down, the initial one we, we put up, uh, according to the PERC Act, we have then put the second Act, um, person up, which was the internal call. He's the outside candidate, but also already on the team as coach and assistant coach, and that's the only two that are viable, the other ones are outside with no experience with data. We had one other candidate who was an internal candidate brought in. So, who's the field, this dude, is the... He's currently assistant coach on the team. So, he is an internal, then, okay. He's internal to an extent, he's not an internal employee of the district. Uh, he's, uh, not the incumbent, but he's certain. And as far as our side is, as far as the specific case... Correct. Is there anything, any... There can always be, there can always be a claim of a certain... The viability is that... The viability is that we discuss, hopefully.
And I, again, I don't, this is your part of being the father of a player. Is there any ethics involved, ethics code there involved?
There's no prohibition that I.
Think so, that's, you know, I just always.
Uh, and in this case, I would stress that the board did follow. Thank you, David. Anything else on athletics?
Mr. Dunn, you and I, um, talked about this.
Um, I think we should discuss that if we're in a session first, uh, and then. I, I think we may have to, because a couple of things that are on the agenda that a lot of the board members want from what you want to show, we will have to. Um, curriculum. Just to bring up number six on curriculum. Did you see in that that we've, uh, added, uh, specific locations for secondary field trips? Uh, some of them they've already gone to before prior to, prior to this, uh, this action on the board agenda. I just wanna specifically bring up Roosevelt Care Center. We have on our list of places that are secondary, uh, field trips goes, almost a full gap of all the care centers that are in Olbridge. And our, our students go there, they sing, they put on holiday show, uh, for them. Roosevelt was not specifically added to the list, although it's in the district, it's in town, which is generally not a problem for our students to go anywhere in town. They were paying the churches and the facilities to, you know, uh, to share the curriculum and the programs there. I'm just bringing your attention tonight because you're scheduled to go to the Roosevelt facility tomorrow for their holiday show. I did wanna say cancel it, uh, based upon that minor caveat that it's, you know, not that specific one. Like I said, like I said, the list includes all of them, I hate to leave one out.
Well, this one's new.
Correct.
That boy hasn't been on the list before.
Sort of against straw poll, that's what I meant, for straw polls, so they can go tomorrow on Santa Claus. If everyone's aware, Roosevelt Care Facility is a county facility. It just opened up in, in, in March, in Orlando. Correct. And it's a very large county facility, and it wasn't on the original, uh, uh, calendar of places to visit. So, David spoke with me over the weekend, and I said, put it on the agenda, since it's so close. And I, I, I don't foresee any problems. And should we get my colleagues in the board to reaffirm that? You want to discuss it? Make sure it's okay. Does it pick up tomorrow? What's the matter? Callahan?
Yes.
Colabel?
Yes.
Prima?
Yes.
Solakowski?
Yes.
Adriani?
Yes.
Orsuli?
Yes.
Um, yes.
Um, I have another question. Um, number. Four. I don't remember seeing, um, a TNT consulting business before. This is a special situation in San Juan that we have in one of our elementary schools. This is extremely good. Uh, that we're discussing.
The purpose of this is to save the district money and to provide the student the best, uh, means possible for education, so.
This has been discussed before, I didn't, I didn't have the correlation here. Um, and number eight. Number eight is asking for a curriculum writer to write the Zion Tech curriculum, and yet it's listed as electronic. I think that up and stuff is going to be, I'm gonna have to check this out, you know, with, um, that's a decent move. Because I have a question.
Then I have a couple of questions, uh, until the board call the class, Mr. Prima. Anything else on curriculum? Moving forward to findings. All right, they have, they have actual items. Udafo and Bobage stated November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen to be approved. May have a motion to approve November thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, Billis. Or do you think we'll, thank you, Mr. Colabel, may I have a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Adriani. Roll forms in there. Adriani?
Yes.
Orsuli?
Yes.
Callahan?
Yes.
Colabel?
Yes.
Prima? Solakowski?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Uh, nine, ten, eleven, we discussed that in the first session. So, we're good? Yes, we got it started, so. Anyone have anything on findings before we move to non-scientific personnel? Non-scientific personnel office.
Um, just for, uh, board information, we did have personnel meeting this week, and I, for many of these with Dr. Bobage. And there were a few questions that Dr. Bobage answered. So, I think right now, the Zion, uh, personnel units are favorable.
Thank you, Mrs. Nadri. Any questions concerning non-scientific personnel?
I'm assuming, um, the first one is just to find out what the conditions are on the network.
Non-scientific personnel operational. Like one that will be discussed in the executive session this evening. Non-scientific personnel other. Point fourteen. We have two network technicians leading. Same time. And I didn't see if we posted that correctly. Just, it's just odd that you could be leading the same time. Non-scientific personnel. Number four. Will the administration have someone to the Board of Education for consideration before the meeting? Three options. Thank you. Any questions on non-scientific personnel? Moving on to non-scientific personnel transportation. Moving forward, supplies, equipment, and services. Since we're on supplies, equipment, and services, Mr. Mara, could you give us a, a quick overview where we stand concerning the, the improvements of the security management relief?
Camera system is ninety-five percent.
Okay.
That's phase, access to the whole system.
Awesome. I just wanna let everyone know that I was out at a few of the schools, and I saw the, the equipment and, and, and the video monitors, and it's incredible. And I think they did a very good job. And speaking with a few of the principals, they have the means, uh, to see what's going on in this district, it's very good. Moving forward, transportation. So, an item just in, um. I guess we fall under the, uh, supplies, equipment, and services. It's not on here, but just to, to make the board aware of it. There's a charter school in East Brunswick that I think three of our school students are going to at this time. We have to pay tuition for them to go there if their, uh, their parents enroll them in the charter school. East Brunswick does pay a large portion of, uh, the sustaining of that charter school. The charter school was approved by the Department of Education. The, uh, the neighborhood charter schools are, you know, hit by this. It's a Hebrew language charter school. And the reason I bring it up is they are now at the point of going out for a re-charter, for a second charter, to extend it from elementary school to middle school. Uh, and up to high school. So, that would, again, have a financial impact on, on this district, if more students going there. If careers in the elementary are going, um, you can, you know, double, double that at least, or triple it if you're looking at the secondary level. Parents are more inclined to feel that children are old enough to start traveling further away to go to school. And will have a financial impact on the, on the, on our budget as well, if more students were sent away to the charter. What is the difference?
Approximately ten thousand dollars. There will be changes, changes during the year, uh, three times, but at this point, the president doesn't know.
And we received.
Plus, plus, we will have to supply the parents with transportation. Usually, it's a holiday transportation, eight hundred eighty dollars. About eleven thousand dollars now, possibly, part of your budget.
And what is the premium you receive from state? Uh, that's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, about seven thousand. Seven thousand? So, does it cut, well, it's a little bit.
Any other charter schools or junior?
Charter schools are.
Yeah, I think.
They're not, they're not either.
These are signed up, that's the local center of the number, they're, they're, they're charging the charter, the charter position, they're probably sending more public funds, so it's in his account of his own, he's not, he's not, but maybe there's any charge to issue, that's what I was thinking.
They don't charge tuition outside, so they don't charge tuition to their resident district, so, and they're eligible to receive students from any county where it's...
So if somebody could go to town, somebody that's...
Yes. No, the transportation is limited to, transportation, which is eight hundred and eighty-four dollars per student, but that town in Burke County would have to pay ten thousand dollars tuition, they have to pay.
Thank you, Mr. Mar. Any questions on transportation? Anything else on, anything in the agenda before I move into the carrying of residence, Mr. Mar? Anyone have anything to comment on from the audience? Just one here?
I have a question.
Comment.
Historically, at the November agenda meeting, there's always been a report to the board and to the public on the status of the audit. And I just want to know, is it going to be a separate meeting? Or, as you know, you were chair of finance, we've normally had one or two meetings at this point, and a schedule of the timeline of whether you need to have the budget process worked. The audit is really the kickoff of that, so we get an idea of where we stand, fund balance, rise, if we have any excess surplus, et cetera, in order to, that we go hand in hand with the new adoption request, and having approved requests that we should discuss at the committee of the whole finance agenda. So that's my question.
We, I've been in contact with, with Mr. Mar, and we will be putting together preliminary meetings for December and January, just like we did last year, and we'll be rolling, enjoying. And, as you know, you've built many budgets within the years, and you know how tedious it is, and everyone is, is very helpful, but the budget meetings beforehand, with the input from public and the committee is, is very died, and that would be...
Will, will the auditors be coming to explain the status of the audit?
That decision hasn't been made yet. The auditors are still in the process of finalizing the audit. However, my recollection is that there were no budget meetings last year until late January and early February, so we are way ahead of where we were last year.
Well, we had meetings in...
Well, there were no meetings in December, and there were no meetings in January, and there were also the beginning meetings or the first...
Because of the storm, the auditors came to a separate meeting, and they explained the budget status. It was Mike Canal, the auditor, and Andrew Savannah.
What I was referring to is the budget. There were no budget, there were no budget committee.
Well, they came to the budget meeting, they came to the budget meeting, because of the storm, they didn't make it to the agenda meeting, there was a change.
They came to the agenda meeting, I was here at the October...
I just want to know what we're going to hear about the status...
There were no budget committee meetings until January.
Anyone else?
Good question. On the baseball coach, the original coach of...
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, yeah. Michael O'Neil, I'm a vice president of the OBD.
Okay.
The original candidate was being hired in step four, which under the contract, you had a decent eight years experience coaching baseball. The new candidate, who is apparently replacing him on this month's agenda, because he was deemed unqualified, is being hired on step one B, which would mean that he has one year of experience. So I know you can't discuss personnel issues publicly, but I just would like to know, do the board members have information that they're privy to, that central administration and the public isn't, that they deem the original candidate unqualified?
The, the decision the listeners have, it was about what the community desired as board member. And there were people in the audience, if you were part of it, that expressed that they have a certain candidate. Board members don't make, they do make decisions based upon the abilities and experience, but if I remember correctly, the board took a stance based upon the outpouring of support from the candidate. So obviously, this experience is important, and I believe both candidates have the experience, but the decision hasn't been made. So just to clarify, the board is entitled to take into account public opinion on qualification? Anyone else in the public?
Official business is done.
Great. My name is Nora Schmitz, I'm representing the Elementary and Pathway Foundation. We are currently running a fundraiser, a fundraiser. We are directing these funds to the Olbridge High School cheerleaders, with the hope that they will be qualifying for the national competition down in Florida. The fundraiser that we have chosen to do, going to Florida, is flamingo flocking. And we sent out notifications, and we went to town council, notified the police, and everybody else in the district. The fundraiser is that you can have a flock of flamingos sent to someone's house for twenty-four hours, and they will land on their front lawn sometime during the course of the night. They wake up in the morning, the flamingos are there, they disappear the next night. We will also include on their front lawn, a lawn sign that we put onto the lawn sign, showing exactly where it came from.
Is this limited to Olbridge?
It is limited to flocking in Olbridge, only because we have to pick up everything and transport it out of town and then bring it home.
Maybe for the right price, you could go outside.
It's negotiable, if you're willing, to take our flamingo migrators, because we have to migrate our entire herd.
How much is it?
It's ten dollars for a dozen to land, it's fifteen dollars for two dozen.
Can we do it to anyone? You know, like someone, probably someone say, hey, you know...
That's a good idea.
Yes. Who are the easiest that could get it done?
The first flock lands on the twenty-fifth, next Monday.
I mean...
What? We started this on Saturday, and we sold out the first week. We are only moving two hundred flamingos a day, and we sold out the first week.
You got my flocking insurance.
You got my flocking insurance to prevent you from being flocked.
My twenty-second anniversary, I need to be flogged.
There's a sign that goes with your flamingo insurance certificate.
You want to be, you want to be flocked.
So you can get anti-flocking insurance, so that nobody can flock you. There's four different levels of flamingos. There's a dozen, there's two dozen, three dozen, and then a super flock of sixty.
Don't say it too fast.
I am, I'm from New Jersey. I talk slower than New York, but a little bit faster than the cell. All right. The anti-flocking insurance, it comes with, we get a certificate, you put it in your window, and they can't land. Okay, so if somebody pulled up, they see that's in the window, they can't land.
Do you like the middle of the night, like you like...
Our flock herders are all adults, and they will be moving them sometime after nine P.M. Theoretically, they should be doing it around midnight, but...
Please, please let the OBD know what's going on.
They do, we were there already, took care of it. They're all, everybody's aware of what's going on, they are all adults that's moving everything, so, and all of our information is what's out there, so if there's any questions or anything, it's going to be directed to us. Again, anything that we raise is going towards, going to the cheerleaders, so we have a special fund set up. If they don't qualify, it's there for them to use next year. Okay, so it's, it's dedicated to them. If you have any questions, we are on Facebook, our website, you can order them online through our website, you can take the order form and mail it to us. However, you know, just please spread the word. It ends, the last flock will land on December twenty-third, okay? So there's, we just have this big vision of all these blow-up Christmas decorations and a flock of flamingos in the middle of it. So, I mean, it's, we have the, I left a couple flyers in the back there, there's some photographs of waking up and seeing a bunch of flamingos sitting on your front lawn. So if anybody has any questions, they can contact us, and...
I give you credit for these ideas. The bricks now, they're working.
There are a lot of letters in the bricks, but they take up a lot of room. It is all in good fun. Again, there's letters that go along with it, that are going to be attached, and if you look at the pictures, you can see that the flamingos are actually have these adult type things on. The letters that go out, it identifies who sent it to them, that we're doing it. The removal of the flamingos will be done in no charge, so please do not hurt our fine feathered friends. It's all being done for the sense of humor and for the... So there's a whole letter that goes along with it, and again, these will be posted in the, but in the lawn, so don't follow the flamingos, send it to the lawn sign. All right. Come August, come June, you might see an army of soldiers, snowmen, landing on somebody's front lawn, we may have, you know, snowmaw, snowman wars, but right now, they're, we're just leaving it in flamingos.
Thank you.
To go with Florida.
That's exciting.
So if you see flamingos around, it's...
Thank you, Nora.
Yes.
Take out the box. Anyone else would like to speak up, if you're in here in the residence? Going once, going twice, and then close this portion of the meeting. Moving forward, any of my outstanding colleagues would like to start a bit of water? See what? If they have anything to say, they can say now before we return, go into the executive session.
So there's...
No one? Okay, we got one person?
I was going to tell everybody, I went to the playoff game, and of course, the PTA S.A. did a fabulous job, the concession stand, it was wonderful game, sorry all the tourists, they did three, and so proud of all the great, all the things they accomplished, I go down, I introduce myself, we talk to people, tell people to come to our meetings, come listen and learn, all the great things that are happening in Olbridge. Wish everybody happy Thanksgiving, and we'll talk again next week.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you.
Next people getting this Thanksgiving gift? Thanksgiving in Eastbrook, was there last year? Anyone else on the board? Yeah, we're gonna... All right, we need a motion to go into the executive session.
Go vote.
Concerning settlement agreements, personnel, and workers compensation. Have a second?
Second.
Roll forms, Mar, if you can bring on in.
Yes.
Alan.
Yes.
Yes. No action to be taken, except for the turn.